The Metropolitan Board of Commissioners, the order for a land use. And I will read the opening statement and it kind of tells the rules of the hearing. So you understand how we do it. This appeal of a conditional use permit, CUP-n that is three eight six dash twenty five, Jose Campos applicant and owner. This conditional use permit application requests a home occupation permit to allow the applicant to operate and park two ten wheelers and two commercial trucks on units on the property. Trucks serve the local agriculture industry and operate approximately two months out of the year and set idle for the balance of the year. The applicant has been operating commercial trucks on the site for approximately five years and submitted the CUP application in response to code enforcement violation letters. The applicant is one of more than a dozen commercial truck operators under code enforcement action for utilizing residential property within Moore County without the appropriate land use approvals. The approval of this CUP will serve to temporary rectify outstanding code violations, provide specific parameters for the operation of the existing business while incentivizing its relocation to a suitably zoned site within one year. So hello, my name is David Sykes, Chair of the Moore County Commissioners. I will be presiding over the hearing today. Persons who wish to provide testimony, they do so orally or in writing. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals lugo on that issue. Please sign the sheet in the back of the room or make a note in chat if you are participating via Zoom. If you would like to present testimony, please speak only when identified by the Chair and begin by giving your name, spelling of your name and address. If you have exhibits for consideration, please provide a copy to staff. If you would like to request the board hold open the record or continue the hearing, you must make that request before the public portion of the hearing is closed. This concludes the introduction. I will begin with the first item today's agenda and call this in this meeting to order, this hearing to order. Okay, so first I'll call for abstentions or conflicts of interest. Do either Commissioners have a conflict of interest in this matter?
No.
And next up will be our staff report, so I'll turn that over to Tamara.
Thanks, Chair, for the record. I'm Tamara Mabbett, Planning Director and our Compliance Planner. Caitlin Kennedy has handled this from its inception, from the code violation to the hearing, so I'd like to defer to her and I'll be her sidekick if any issues come. And then before you start, Steven is on and he's going to pull up a map, so we all have the same. This is one of the byproducts of COVID that has become a habit and really useful. Got it. Thank you, Steven.
Before we start, I believe we received a memo from the City of Irrigan's Attorney, Kate Sullivan. If you can add that into reference.
So I would move that we add the letter from the City of Irrigan.
You're second.
I second that.
You're the second one, correct?
Aye.
All files, much in care.
Well, thank you guys so much. We all know that we're here today because of the, for the City of Irrigan to feel the conditional use permit. CUP-n R dash three eight six dash two five for a home occupation permit that would allow for a temporary commercial trucking business for the applicant, business owner and property owner, Mr. Jose Arredondo Campos. He resides at two thirty Northwest Oregon Avenue. He's going to be that parcel in the middle on the map that's contiguous with the city limits of Irrigan.
So Michaela is translating for us today.
I explained that he, she's just reading the description of what he had read in the first meeting, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's kind of a unique parcel. It does need access from Northwest Oregon, the portion of which, which is city owned and maintained by Irrigan. His property is a little over an acre. It is zoned suburban residential. We have been trying to work with commercial trucking operations, operating throughout the county in residential zones. And this conditional use permit is a way to help rectify those on a temporary timeline. Because of the proximity to the Irrigan city limits, I feel that the findings that we presented for Planning Commission acknowledged a lot of potential impacts to both the roadways as well as the neighbors for concerns of noise, hours of operation, damages to the roadway, parking. And the Planning Commission approved the CUP under the following conditions, most of which provides specific and defined restrictions and limitations on the commercial truck use and operations. Those conditions I can read off if you like, or I believe you read out. Yes.
I don't think that, yes.
Okay. Yes, you know, so they, they address where the trucks are going to be parked. They addressed additional screening for adjoining property owners. Half of the property is already screened on the western half and the northern side. You know, it expressly states that the permit would only be valid for one year, would not be up for renewal, and the use must cease to exist after that year. One of the, one of the conditions that we would hope to modify would be that the applicant shall obtain and provide a copy of an access permit from the City of Irrigan before July thirty first of this year. You know, we did that in hopes of working and having the applicant as permitted as possible and realize in, after the fact that that probably wasn't going to work. So we would like to make the recommendation to take that out.
I would just add a couple of things based on conversations with our Land Use Council, Dan Kearns, who's online and can also speak after me or answer any questions. We just wanted it noted again for the record, even though I think it's in the background. This is one of seventeen other similar CUPs. So we started, I think, three years ago with a neighborhood approach to cleaning up code violations, solid waste and other code violations. And we found a couple of neighborhoods with a lot of trucking, primarily farming trucking operations, requiring those folks to shut down immediately. The Planning Commission believe was a pretty serious hardship. We had a couple of work sessions with them, both here and in Gordman. Folks, most of those folks purchased property outside the city so they could have a home and a yard and park their trucks in a safe place. When they purchased, they were not aware that they could not have their trucks. For one reason, there were other trucks parked in the area. I think we've communicated that message pretty loud and clearly, but as an interim measure, while we allow these businesses to relocate and find a property that's appropriately zoned, we've been processing these temporary conditional use permits. This is the only such permit that we've limited with the Planning Commission, limited it to one year. It was really the only permit where we had any opposition, neighborhood opposition. The other conditions are pretty much common, hours of operation, et cetera. And that's right, this, that, one of the issues that some of the other businesses in a similar situation, one is availability of commercial and industrial property, the other is the price. We have a lot of industrial development and the price of industrial land is very high. So a couple of them have moved out of county to the Hermiston area. Some of them are locating temporarily and as staff. It's out of my bailiwick. Matt and I have talked, but we've talked with some larger farms to see if they could set aside some ground that they don't farm where these could be parked. There are some folks parked at a, in a fenced area inside a mini storage unit area. That works for some. It's not an option for everybody apparently, so just wanted to provide that additional background. Dan, do you have anything to add? Do you want to address Attorney Sully's letter now or after? Let's see, Matt is going to take you off.
Okay, can you, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. Yes, this is Dan Kearns for the record, County Land Use Council. And there are a couple of things to understand as you kind of look at the Planning Commission's decision and also in the context of the City of Irrigan's legal memo. This use comes to you not because it's listed as an outright allowed use or even because it's listed as conditionally allowed. This comes to you as a very kind of narrow, highly constrained home occupation type use. And the, so it's only under that specific provision and the requirements and constraints of a home occupation that this is allowed in this situation. And still the focus of this, because it does require a conditional use permit, home occupations do, it's kind of a case by case evaluation of the operation and the impacts and a crafting of conditions to mitigate those impacts or eliminate them to the point of non-significance. And I think Tamara said that this is, first of all, is a kind of a common and somewhat weird situation in Moro County. These small family trucking operations that are tied to the agricultural economy are kind of pretty common in the county and oftentimes pop up in residential zones where the people live. And that's exactly what is the case here. They're relatively small, just one, two or three trucks involved. People live there. And she indicated that there haven't been complaints about these in the past. I think most of these that I've seen have come in through a code enforcement type process, which I believe is complaint driven in the county. So at some point it came on someone's radar screen, usually it's a neighbor, that, hey, this is a residential zone and it appears to be a, a commercial operation. And that's how I think the complaint comes in. But unlike a full-on trucking operation, as I mentioned, they're fairly constrained in the scope and intensity of the operation. And also the, by temporal limitation, this is tied to the egg economy and I believe it is operational only for about two months in the summer. So it isn't like a full-on commercial trucking operation, which isn't allowed in the residential zone in the county. And so the, the focus is on identifying the impacts, crafting conditions to address those impacts. And this one, as I understand, is the, it's the only one I've seen that has a short duration and no option for renewal. And I think that's in deference to the neighbors and City of Irrigan to give a time certain when this will, the, you know, the situation will have to be resolved. They'll have to find a place to operate, store the trucks off-site. But understand, because it's a home occupation, people live there, the business, which is largely bookkeeping of the, and call center for dispatching these trucks, you know, that is conducted within the house. The trucks happen to be stored parked outside, like anyone parks their vehicles outside their dwelling. That happens here too. I believe everyone in the residential zone is entitled to park one personal truck onsite just as accessory to a, a single family dwelling. And so that's, the business is operated in the house, within the residential dwelling. The trucks are parked outside. It is secondary accessory to the primary residential use. And the conditions are, were crafted by the Planning Commission to address the impacts that the neighbors identified. The one condition I, I have some trouble with is the last one, condition ten, because it really goes to something that's outside of county regulation. It requires these people to obtain a, a permit to use the road from the city. I don't, I don't know to what extent that's required or feasible, but it's not a county regulation. And if there is a city requirement, then there's a city requirement and it, I would not recommend you make that a condition of your permit. That the rest of the conditions are crafted to address the impacts or identified. This one, condition number ten, isn't, it's, it's kind of out of place in my view and I wouldn't recommend that you get involved in this relationship with these people in the city by requiring it as a condition of this permit. So that's kind of the, the nature of this use. It's, in my experience, kind of a strange one. Anytime something comes in as a home occupation, it's always an unusual circumstance. Home occupations as a kind of land use theory arose as, you know, tax accountants and hairstylists opened up their operations in their houses, had, you know, very few customers that come to the house. The, the structure remains looking like a house, functioning like a house. And that's the theory behind home occupations. That's the objective of the conditions and we leave it to the neighbors to identify for us what the impacts are that deviate from that house type model and provide justification for conditions. So, anything else you thought I should particularly address, Tamara?
No, unless you want to address any of the specific items that is solely presented or?
Yeah, oh, the, the city's legal memo, yes. We don't often get this in these kind of proceedings, but the city's legal memo nicely capsulizes the legal arguments. And so it starts out with kind of arguing that it's not contained within the residential structure because the trucks are parked outside. My understanding of this, when I sat through the hearing for the Planning Commission and heard the whole presentation is that the business is operated out of the house. Granted, the trucks aren't parked in the house, but I don't think that that's what this contemplates, this requirement that it be contained within a residential structure and operated in the residential structure. So if you're a tax accountant and you operate your business in your house, you know, your customers are not going to park in your garage. So I think it does meet the requirements that the business here is operated within, within the residential structure. It's secondary, it's accessory to the residential use where the owners live. Let's see, so she also argues in here that it's not secondary, it's kind of takes over the whole property. Understand, it's very limited duration, which in, in my experience with trucking companies is kind of surprising, but it is. It's tied to the harvest in the area and so that's a very, I think it's two months, is it, Tamara?
Approximately, yes.
Yeah. So that's a, a very significant constraint on this operation. And one point I think that's valid in these, in this memo is that, you know, the findings could do a better job of explaining the connection between the conditions and the objective of achieving kind of a non-significance in these impacts, tying the, the conditions to minimizing or eliminating the impacts. And so if you're inclined to affirm the Planning Commission, I would ask that you allow us to essentially beef up the findings to provide a better explanation as to why and how the conditions are designed to and actually will achieve non-significance in terms of the impacts. So that's, that is, I think, a valid point in the legal memo. Let's see, also the argument that the code prohibits commercial trucking operations. And I think that's true and that's reflected in the fact that it's not listed as a use allowed outright or a conditional use as in its own right. This comes into you as a home occupation, which is listed as a allowed conditional use in the zone. And this one in particular, I think, like all home occupations come with a lot of conditions that are designed to achieve the home occupation requirements. And that's the objective of code. That's very specific limitation, a specific mechanism for processing this request as opposed to a more general prohibition on full-on commercial trucking operations in the zone, which this is not a full-on commercial trucking operations. It's extremely constrained by the virtue of the fact that it's in a residential structure, in a residential zone, and the conditions are designed to maintain that function. I think those are the, the length, the bulk of the memo has to do with the, the findings are not extremely tightly drawn and don't provide a great explanation of how the conditions achieve this, the objective of no significant impacts. So I, I would agree with that one. For me it does. What, Tamara, anything else?
I just want to make sure you pause.
Okay, yes, this is a, a long pause, so go ahead. I'm ready to hear what you have to say.
Not at this time.
Gotcha. Okay, does that conclude staff report then? Okay. Commissioners have any questions of staff?
Yeah, I've, I've got one for Mr. Kearns. You reiterated that you thought the tenth condition on the permit was something that we shouldn't do, but if the City of Irrigan does not give a permit to allow for use on the road, then it seems like this is sort of, we would be approving something that could not be done. So I don't understand why we would take that condition out. If the road can't be accessed, then that sort of ends the ability to use the property.
That may be so, that may be so, but I don't want to guess. I haven't analyzed the, the county's regulatory, or the city's regulatory authority in this regard. And it may be as advertised that it's a deal killer, but I don't want to presuppose that and therefore make the absence of a city permit a condition of your approval. So that if for one reason or another they don't need one or they, they don't happen to, you know, it, it doesn't issue, you know, that may kill it, but it, your permit is still valid and if that regulatory problem is resolved, they don't have to go and get a permit. So unless you have it as an express condition of approval, and that's why I don't recommend you have that in there. It's sort of like, it's hard to say what's required to get the city permit, but, and they'll have to deal with that if it, if that's a regulatory hurdle they have to get over. But by including it as a condition of your permit, if they don't show up with a city permit, then they don't have a county permit. And so it's, I would recommend you just stick with your regulatory scope that's in your code and, you know, if, if the city has involvement. The weird thing is this, this is sort of an island, but it's not a, I guess, sort of like a peninsula of unincorporated Moro County within that projects into the city of Irrigan. And so it's a, again, kind of a weird situation that you don't see very often and I would like to not complicate your permit with city regulations. I mean, ultimately this land should be annexed. It looks, kind of looks and acts residential, but for some reason it's not been annexed.
Questions to staff?
Chair, Michaela is asking Mr. Campos's translator if she needs help translating because our, our desire is to translate both ways so that they can both hear and then speak, so.
Do, do they need more time as we?
Let's check.
Do they want more time? Are you okay?
She's like, I don't know, so.
Yeah, they kind of explain her. He's only kind of the basic what's going on. I haven't received, I haven't seen the letter that he received, but I know he doesn't run his business through his phone and I'm just going to translate, so I'm not trying to.
Okay, sure, sure, sure.
So he doesn't run his business through his home, but he has to use his truck to get to work. So I think he was given a time because he has another truck on his property.
Just, just one moment. If you, maybe the first piece that you'll call the applicant, so just a point of order, we were wondering if you wanted more time to translate what was being said.
I'm just going to interpret to him what's going on.
Well, the applicant, when the applicant is, the applicant of the appeal.
You can, you can treat it that way, although appeals are de novo, so.
That's fine, I just want to make sure. Okay. Yeah, okay.
So, so then, I mean, you can call the city.
They're, they're like, they're kind of. Okay, is everybody done talking, asking questions?
Thank you for that. It's a little different. We haven't translated quite to that degree.
No, no, I want to give, well, probably just give them some time between each response.
Good, okay.
To give that.
Okay. So you could, Dan, can I ask you a question? Do you?
Sure.
I've seen hearings both ways since the City of Irrigan's, the appellant. Should the chair call the city first or call Mr. Campos, who was the applicant? And we do run a de novo appeal.
Okay, sure. In all of these, even, in all these proceedings, land use applications, all the way through the local appeal process, the applicant has the burden of proof. And that doesn't change just because there's an appeal of a Planning Commission permit. So the applicant has the burden of proof. They should go first and they get last, they get final rebuttal. And the City of Irrigan, like any of the neighbors, can speak during the opponent section, but I would go to Mr. Campos first, then anyone else in support, then anyone opposed, like Irrigan, and then Mr. Campos should get final rebuttal if he's so inclined.
So, okay, you, you can come up here because first we're going to call on you and you can talk to us.
Okay, and that's in line.
No, I just, I just.
There isn't very much to say. Dolly and Biagis, six thirty Southwest Third Street in Irrigan. He doesn't have very much to say. He's just kind of wanting to see if there's a solution to the. He just needs time to find a place where he can park his semi-truck. I think he has two. He has one that he uses for work. He takes it to work and back. He doesn't run his business through his phone. So in two year, in ten years, he's moved his, one of his semi-trucks twice. So that's another reason why. I mean, there's not, it's not allowed, or two months, I'm sorry, two months out of the ten years. So he's not running a business again through his home. So right now it's gonna, he's gonna, harvest coming up, so he'll be using only, his vehicle only two, his truck, two months. And he's, he's okay with everything. He just needs extra time to find a place where to. And he's, he's okay with everything, he just needs extra time to find a place where to put his second. So if it's out of town, I mean, he's confused as far as where, which direction he needs to go. I believe he needs to, did he apply, he, did you say he needed to get a permit through the city? In the previous meeting? She was, he was given a permit from the planning department for one year. And so they, he went back to the city. He went twice, and I guess he wasn't able to take care of business. Now he wants to know why he wasn't able to find a solution, or nobody wanted to talk to him at the city.
So at this point, is, did that, anybody want to say at this point? So if staff or the commissioners would want to ask some questions, ask some time.
Uh, so, it sounded like, and I'm gonna speak slowly so you can translate. You only run one truck, would you be able to get by running only one truck if you had to get rid of the other one?
Well, that's what he's trying to sell it, or either find a different place where he can find, park his second semi-truck.
So what about the, we have been presented with, there's two flatbed trailers, two ten-wheelers?
Yeah, you know, those ten-wheelers?
So what are those used for?
So he's just had, he's only had them parked there for ten years. Again, it comes back to the, back to square one, where he needs extra time to find. Kind of hard, it's kind of hard to find a light industrial place in, pharmacy.
Yeah.
And anywhere. So one of his semi-trucks is, is his semi or the ten-wheelers? So one of the semi-trucks that he has there belonged to his brother that recently passed away, so now the family's trying to figure out. Whether, you know, they're gonna sell it, or again, find a parking space for it somewhere else.
Um, Mr. Campos, on your application, you proposed four trucks. That you would operate for two months out of the year, so have those circumstances changed?
He's only using one. And the other one, he told you guys apparently that it belonged to his brother.
Yes, yes. But how many trucks are currently parked on this property that are commercial?
Two ten-wheelers that are commercial that, that he doesn't use?
Four trucks on his property. One that he's using for work.
Yes. So he just recently started using it last year, for about a month, he won't miss, yeah, about a month.
Okay, and real quick, um. Before we went before uh Planning Commission, we discussed the application. You had advised that you'd been in operations for five years.
Maybe you misunderstood, or maybe he didn't understand, or there was miscommunication. He understood that he was asked, he was asked, how many years has he had those vehicles on the property, not how many years he's been running business?
Can I ask uh Mr. Kearns question?
Sure.
I just, my, my wheels are turning, um. What would? If a commissioner owned farm property that somebody could park vehicles on, and potentially offer a solution to this issue. What would be the ethical concerns about potentially pursuing that route?
Um, talk about it later. Yeah, I mean, there, there, people own property, and a lot of things could possibly happen, and, you know, wheels turn in your mind. But it's not related to the approval criteria or the appeal issues here. It's more of a practical concern that is outside of this hearing. And outside of your function as a county commissioner, so I would uh save it for later.
Thank you, that was what I was looking for.
Okay, thank you very much, the questions are done, yeah. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Uh, well, because it's in favor of the application, the CUP application.
In favor of?
Not in favor of the.
I, just to be clear, my name's Mary Killian, I'm from Borbman, Oregon, and I do not know Mr. Campos personally, I. First time I laid eyes at him was the last time he was at the planning commission meeting. Um, the, I felt compelled at that time to speak on his behalf, because I, um, well. Maybe you watched the meeting, but maybe you didn't, but um. Mr. Campos is providing a vital service to our local economy, him along with the seventeen other small trucking companies that. We have cited for non-compliance, and I find these small businesses intriguing and. And not only that, I, I'm very impressed by their willingness to serve our communities, as well as provide for their families in this manner. It's a very seasonal business, but yet they are able to make it work, and there's only one way. To get the crops to the processors, and that's my truck, and only one way to keep the processors going is to get the crops to them. And they provide that service, they stand in that gap, and they're willing to put their personal investments on the line. And do that for us, because if the processors are processing food, we aren't eating, so I feel that it's a. It's a global issue, not just a local moral county one, so I think that this is a bigger issue. Obviously, we do not have the land available for these people. Excuse me, I shouldn't say that, uh, these businesses to operate effectively. They're small businesses, they do not have the funds or the resources probably to go purchase a large piece of ground. And if, even if you could find one, right now that was not being used for something large-scale industrial. Um, we just don't have the zoning in our county for it, and I challenge you to find some. That is available, and on top of that, what is available would incur, is, is owned privately. And would incur additional charges for these businesses to use, which I believe they are willing to do. But they still have to find those options, they are not readily available to them. People aren't knocking on their door and saying, hey, come to my place, it's a perfect truck over here, so. Only thing that's happened so far is that they have been cited and told they can no longer conduct business out of their homes. And I believe that this is a historical issue, it's not something they intentionally came out here and said, I'm gonna break the law. I'm gonna go and I'm gonna do this, I, I do believe that they bought these properties that were at one time quite rural. And the urban growth has surrounded them on many sides and in many ways, and now. The county just randomly decides twenty years after they buy their property, or whenever, that they're gonna do a neighborhood cleanup, and start enforcing the codes. And let's be honest, unless you are really into that, you probably don't know what all the codes are, so. And, and so now their job, this citation, and they have to find a solution. And I believe the planning commission's recommendation was quite fair on all sides, um. I just attended the meeting, and, and they, there was a lot of party discussion on it, and um. I think they tried very hard to mitigate the issues to the local neighbors, it's a short time, I mean, a year. To solve this problem for Mr. Campos, uh, if it was me and I had to go purchase some property within a year, I'd be a little stressed about that. But he agreed to it, and so I believe he's gonna do his best to do what the planning commission recommended. Um, I just, before you, I sent you each an individual letter any weeks ago regarding the. Use of land in Laurel County, and I also attended the strategic planning meetings that were put on by the county. And I listened earlier to the presentation, and unfortunately, I didn't hear this brought up, even though I heard it in the. Strategic planning meetings, that this was an issue, that small businesses are not supported, welcomed, and embraced in Laurel County. Large businesses are given the green light at every turn, we'll change zoning, we'll do whatever you want. But small businesses are just, you know, whatever, you, you struggle, you get it, you get, you make your own way, you know, and I think. Like when you change that, and these small trucking companies are a way to start doing that. It's a handout towards our residents in Laurel County, this is a big group, I mean, this is seventeen people, not just. Individual people, these are, these are trucks that are moving product, it's a lot of product, you know, and it's a lot of money for our local economy, local. It stays right here, all that money that they earn stays here, they're not, they're not leaving with it, you know, they're not based out of Florida, or. God knows where AWS lives, but you know, they're, it stays here, and, and they, they shop at our grocery stores and our restaurants, and. Send their, their kids to our schools and pay their taxes, so. Let's not discount them, these businesses, let's support them, I understand what's gonna come after me. And I understand that there might be a little drama, and that. Maybe Mr. Campos hasn't been given the time yet to rectify some of the things that they're gonna discuss, but um. I think we should give him a shot, I think we should give him a chance, just because he represents a really good part of our county. A really good sector of our economy that will re, that will allow us to remain not only stable, but vigorous in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any, uh, is there anybody else that wants to speak in favor of Mr. Campos's uh application? Well, I guess we should check on the Zoom too, is there anybody on Zoom who wants to speak in favor of Mr. Campos? Uh, CUP application? Raise your hand. See anybody, Matt?
Not seeing anybody, sir.
Okay, so is, uh, we'll move on now to, is there anyone who uh wants to speak? In opposition to Mr. Campos's CUP?
I do.
Okay, just come on up, sit up here, uh, identify yourself and where you're from and.
I'm Aaron Palmquist, the city manager for Irrigan, I don't think I need to spell my name, down five hundred northeast main. This is our city attorney, uh, Ms. Paige Sully, and I'm gonna turn it over to her.
Good after, good afternoon, uh, I'm not going to uh spend a lot of time. Going over the uh arguments that I've uh set out in, in my briefing, I would like to address. Just a couple, couple of issues that have come up, uh. One, one being, and. With, with regard to uh thi- this being a home occupation use, because it's a. Bookkeeping and a call center, and it's operated within the house. First and foremost, I had opportunity to review the record of the hearing before the planning commission. Now, I don't recall there being any evidence in the record regarding the activity that would occur. Within the residence or accessory use uh to a, a building to the residence. That would allow this to be identified appropriately as a, as a home occupation. Were that the case, were this a bookkeeping, call center uh business? You wouldn't be hearing, the, and the planning commission would not have been hearing about noise, exhaust, dust, vibration. Uh, and uh, you wouldn't be hearing about damage to the roadway. You wouldn't be hearing about this at all if this business was conducted within the residence, it's not, this is a trucking company. It involves trucks running for extended periods of time, in, inconvenient hours of, of the day, day and night. That is what is resulting in the negative impacts that are why this is not a permitted, or for that matter, a conditional use. Within this particular zone. Uh, moreover, there is no evidence presented that. The, it's got to be conducted primarily within a residence or a building normally associated with uses permitted in the zone. Uh, so, there's no evidence that this was in the dwelling, in the residence, and I, I thought I heard earlier, even today. That Mr. Campos indicated that he's not running this out of his home, I, but I, I had difficulty. Hearing, uh, completely hearing what he was saying, but there's been no showing that any activity incurring in. Any building is either the residence or uh. A building associated with uses permitted in the zone, the trucks certainly aren't being stored there, and that's not where they're running. Uh, this is a trucking, trucking business, the primary operation of it is the movement of, operation of trucks. Uh, not accessory uses, were that the ca- to be the case that. Uh, bookkeeping, marketing, call center activities that are collateral to an otherwise. Um, uh, uh, some other building, construction building, uh, bu- business, uh, concrete business. Uh, virtually any business would qualify as a home occupation, all they'd have to do is do a little bit of bookkeeping. In the house, home occupations are traditionally limited to those businesses that have little or no impact. On the adjacent property owners, the adjacent residential property owners, that's why these require conditional use permits, and that's why they are so heavily regulated. You see hairdressers, uh. Bookkeepers, uh, professional services. Uh, those, those are the kind of businesses you see in a, in a ho- home occupation, bed and breakfasts. Uh, this is not a traditional home occupation, it doesn't qualify as a home occupation, therefore it doesn't qualify for this CUP. Secondly, in addressing section three point zero five one. That ordinance is very straightforward, uh, there's not a lot of ambiguity there, and there's no mention whatsoever. About the size of the trucking occupation, it doesn't say large trucking occupations aren't permitted in the zone, it doesn't say. Small trucking operations are permitted in the zone, it has an exception for individuals that use a truck. To drive to and from their place of business. I point out, this wasn't even addressed before the planning commission. Uh, in terms of the prohibitions in, in this particular, in this particular ordinance. I do believe that this carries the day, because. This is the one business, uh, or one of the few businesses that is actually explicitly prohibited in this zone. Uh, not whether it qualifies as a home occupation or not, it is outright explicitly prohibited. And rules of statutory construction provide that if there is a conflict between two ordinances, in this case. Say your home occupation ordinance and this trucking prohibition. The more specific ordinance takes precedence over the more general ordinance. The more general ordinance in this case is your home occupation ordinance. Three point zero five one couldn't be more explicit, it couldn't be more clear that a trucking occupation is, a trucking business. Is a prohibited use within the zone. I would suggest to you that, I mean, that, that seals the deal, that, that should carry the day uh on, on the city's appeal. Finally, I, uh, there's been some discussion about the permit to utilize the city, city street. Finally, I, uh, there's been some discussion about the permit to utilize the city, city street and the removal of that con- condition. I think I agree with Mr. Carnes that tying it to the receipt of a permit from the city is probably going to be difficult to manage, but I'm gonna suggest to you that you not take that condition out, but that you modify it to require him to have lawful vehicular access. That is something that is within his control. And he shouldn't be getting a conditional use permit for an activity for which he does not have lawful vehicular access. Were that to be the case, that would simply be an invitation for unlawful vehicular access. And so if you're going to modify that, that would be my suggestion. Is, it's a good idea anyway, that if he's gonna provide, if he's gonna ask for a con- a conditional use permit for a home occupation, he ought to be able to demonstrate to you that he has lawful vehi- vehicular access in order to be able to conduct that, that business. I pointed out several inadequacies in the findings of fact. Quite frankly, I don't believe, it's my opinion, many of them are not actually supported by evidence in the record that, that was presented. And I guess I'm kind of struck, I was struck during the meeting, I was especially struck during the planning commission's discussions and deliberations. I mean, some of the testimony that we've heard here today. I get that there are, that it is, this puts Mr. Campos in an unfortunate situation. And I get that there is the desire to want to, um, address what might, some may be called the equities of this situation. However, I've heard virtually nothing, uh, discussed about the impacts of this situation on the adjacent property owners. Virtually nothing about the equities that, uh, should lend themselves towards the, the neighbors. There was testimony from one of the neighbors about her mother falling on the sidewalk and not being able to be heard when she called for help because of the sound of the trucks. That's kind of compelling evidence. Nobody even, even mentioned that in the, in the, in the deliberations. There are equities on both sides of this issue. There may be a shortage of, of real property for Mr. Campos to, uh, operate his business. There's a, there's a huge shortage of housing. That doesn't mean that you get to build a house wherever you want one. Land use is so that there is some semblance of reasonableness, some ability to control the negative impacts of development on properties to suit and to be adequate for the public at large, not for the benefit of, of a particular property owner at the expense of the public at large. And so while I certainly, certainly recognize the equities here, I certainly feel unfortunate for Mr. Campos. He's been operating this business there in a manner that has caused him to come into conflict with his neighbors. These conditions of approval do not change that. All they do is compress them into a shorter time period. And, um, I believe by only granting it for a year, all that's happening is, is we're kicking this can down the road. And then in a year, when this activity may not have ceased, now we're looking at an enforcement action or a, some other land use, uh, some other application for land use. So my suggestion to you folks is, is to overturn, uh, the, the ruling of the planning commission. It's not based in the law, it's not based in the facts. The criteria have not been met. In fact, there was virtually no discussion about the actual criteria of, of, of approval. Most of it focused on how can we craft conditions that would allow this individual to have his conditional use permit despite the fact that he does not qualify uh, under the terms of the criteria that we have set out in our own code and adopted is in, as the manner in which we want to manage these. And unless you have any questions for me, I have nothing further for you folks, thank you.
Is there anybody, well, no, yeah, is there anybody on, uh, Zoom who have questions? Somebody, could you identify yourself? Bye for one.
It's my understanding that they have testimony. Only the applicant can ask us questions.
They don't, they can't ask up?
No, only, but they can give testimony.
Yeah, no, I'll pose. Is there anybody else in the? Whoever, if you have your, your hand raised.
Chair Sykes?
Excuse me, before you start, did you understand what was said about, uh, questioning, uh, the, uh, propo- opponent?
So, Karla McLean, uh, planning official, city boardman, we would like to provide neutral testimony. I just, I just wanna make sure that happens.
Yeah, okay, hold on just a second. So is?
Can I excuse, thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room who is in, uh, opposed to the, okay?
Hi, my name is Nancy Cannon, and if Stephen would bring that map up one more time.
Just your address for the record.
It's on the paper there. Okay, so this is Mr. Campos' property right there. My property is right here. And about him putting up that fence that went the entire length of the property, that's untrue. Um, the original owners of that property and my late husband and I, we put up that first part of the fence. We allowed him to put up a fence and attach it to ours because he wanted to have livestock. And we thought that was a reasonable request. So we agreed, go ahead, put it up, but we're not going to help you for it. This has always been a residential area. I've lived here for thirty years. I've lived in that home that I live in for thirty years. It's always been residential. We've never, ever had any trouble with the people that have lived next door until now. And it's, it should remain residential, you've got residential all over. And it's true that the noise is a big thing. And we worry about the water, we worry about, um, having chemicals from trucks, as we know, oil, gasoline are a greater risk for the groundwater and the preservation of the groundwater. And while I, I understand Ms. Killian's statements, I believe that is not a part of this hearing, that should have been part of perhaps this strategic planning hearing. And she is not a party to the residential area here. So I just really don't feel like she really has a dog in the fight. So we are in opposition. I know my neighbor lady that lives directly, that lived across from me and her mother, they talked about her mother falling down. And I don't know that you, it was in the record, apparently not, because her mother did fall. And she was out there all day, she ended up in the hospital, but it was because of the noise, none of us could hear her. And I just, this is not a home business, it's a trucking business. And there are options for commercial truckers to find other property to store their trucks. He's not the only one that has been in this neighborhood that has had a truck. He's the only one who has not relocated his truck and driven to his truck as part of their workday. And do you have any questions for me?
Uh, yeah, so the noise has been brought up a lot. So how often are trucks running? Uh, it's like, are they being, from your perspective, being parked and just left on?
That has been an issue in the past. After this last hearing, it has not been as bad. I work from home part of the time and, uh, you can hear it. Like, if I have a video conference, I have to move to the other side of the house. So I understand, I, and I feel bad, I do feel bad for them, but there are other options for it. And like I say, other people that have owned and operated their trucks, they park their trucks elsewhere. They drive their car to their truck, and that's part of their business day, just like we drive to our job.
Commissioner Peterson, if I may? Ms. Cannon, is, your concerns are, are valid, it's a residential neighborhood. Um, does that go for all commercial trucks across the board?
In our neighborhood, yes, there, that's a city street, that's a residential area.
And are there currently any development projects on?
There are development projects, but those are almost to an end.
Those same concerns, uh, can be addressed to those as well, right? The ten-wheelers?
No, there are not ten-wheelers.
I think there was one working on a project just adjacent to, uh, Mr. Campos' property earlier today. So.
I don't see on the other side of his property.
I just wanted to know if those concerns were across the board for all commercial vehicles.
As far as I'm concerned, I don't know about those, so I can't speak to that. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carla, did you wanna speak as a, uh, opponent?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, again, Carla McLean, um, city of boardman, planning official for the record. Um, can you hear me okay? I'm sorry, what was that?
Could you identify yourself again, please?
Sure, Carla McLean, city of boardman, planning official. Yep, so, um, the city of boardman has previously submitted comment letters to some of the other seventeen, um, conditional use permits that have been issued. Um, and our concerns were not dissimilar to the issues that, um, the city of Arigan's a- attorney has raised. Um, that it is a misapplication of the county's zoning ordinance. Um, the zoning ordinance is very clear that one truck is allowed. And the use of a conditional use permit to, um, negate that is not a proper use of a conditional use permit. Um, I've done planning for twenty-five years and regularly get inquiries from people. Well, I know you don't allow it, can't you just issue me a conditional use permit? And the answer to that has to be no, unless the use is specifically called out as a use that could be allowed conditionally. And I, and I think Ms. Sully has this, has this right. The, the, a pertinent, the pertinent language is the one that says you can have a truck. Not a small trucking business, not a big trucking business, but a truck. So, um, I, I, I guess the city of boardman continues to, has the, the same concerns that the city of Arigan does. And these are happening throughout North Laurel County. And I absolutely agree that, you know, these folks need to find a path, um, to become compliant. But this is a code enforcement issue and should be treated as that. Um, if they, if you need to amend how you get through your code process, I would encourage the county to do that. But to use your land use planning system to attempt to mitigate or negate a, a code enforcement, um, violation does not seem to be consistent with what your zoning ordinance requires. Um, I, I just encourage the, the commissioners to, to consider that closely. The city of boardman, again, we share the concerns that the city of Arigan has put forward. And, and while this is neutral testimony, I, I, I hope you consider it, um, closely. Appreciate the opportunity to comment and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Orin McLatter? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Address, the phone ending in four one four eight has had their hand up.
Yes, hi, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, identify yourself, please.
Yeah, Rhonda with an H, R, H O N D A, Riley, R I L E Y. You asked, uh, for people who supported and, uh, no neighbors said they did. And then you asked for people that did not support, and I would like to voice again, no. My mom almost died. Um, I tried to work with this guy for five, seven years. He's been driving two or three trucks, semi trucks, across the street where we live, where our front door is, that's across the street is his, and going on my property all the time. Um, I, and I repeatedly, weekly would tell him and his brother, please don't drive on my driveway or my property. And, and he has to do that to back up and park this long bed, um, semi truck there. And he has destroyed my, uh, my driveway, which was very expensive to do. I had to take a home loan out of a hundred and twenty thousand to sell my property to do some work like that. So it's, it's precious to me, you know, it didn't come cheap. And, um, and he, he's just not been workable, no respect to, to us. No, uh, oh, I'll do whatever I can to make this right and, you know, um, I, I, I will make it quiet and, and I will change this or that to, to make it, you know, wha- his business to be, uh, appreciated by the neighbors. But he doesn't work with, with us, he didn't work with me, with my family. And he, he actually was ripping up everything. And, um, so, no, I don't support, uh, a person like this doing this. I, I don't think that, um, you know, that, that he, he has a right anymore than what we have. That, that was made from the beginning as a residential homes, where kids and dogs run in the street and they play two square and four square in the street. You know, they have basketball hoops in the street. You get these semis that are huge coming any time of day. Uh, it, it changes the whole atmosphere. Now, the, the next thing I would like to say is that, that attorney that spoke on behalf of Erin is a bomb. That means, you know, she hit the, the ball out of the park, a home run that brought four runs in over home plate. That is totally accurate. There's other options for this gentleman besides what he's doing. This is not the only thing, and he's gonna die if he doesn't get it. No, there, there's other options and other ways, and he needs, my vote is he needs to look at other ways. This is not acceptable to the neighbors. We do not like it, we want it stopped. This is not fair, it's not equitable, this is not equitable. And I'm surprised that Arigan's group, you know, is not equitable. You know, it hurts us, our family is hurt by this. And no, I'm strongly adamant, no, this is not fair, and this needs to stop.
Okay, thank you.
The same person.
Okay, is there anybody else, uh, on Zoom that would like to speak in opposition? Raise your hand. Okay, uh, is there anyone who would like to speak neutral on this, that just has a comment? Anybody on Zoom that just is neutral or wants to make a comment? Don't see anybody, okay? Okay, um, the opponent has a chance for rebuttal, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, ma'am, could you tell Mr. Campos or, and anybody else? Could, well, tell him, he has a chance to answer any of the, uh, negative, the opponent comments that he's had here.
Is it okay if he speaks from here or?
The reason we do that is because it's all on the record, okay, but they call, it's all recorded and everything. We just wanna make sure we hear what, everything that's said, that's why, okay?
The first pers- pers- the first opponent after the city. The one right behind us, yeah. Nancy?
Mary.
Mary, okay.
Oh, sorry, it is Nancy.
It is Nancy, okay. The, the things that she says are, are lies. Should be quick. There's another person, the one that just spoke over.
There's another person, the one that just spoke, that was on speaker, just both, those are also lies. She has cameras. She has cameras to prove whether he goes over her driveway or he doesn't. Or that he has his trucks on all day, which is. And he doesn't even have dogs, that. Or. Or anything like that. So I believe he, she also did say something about a fence and. Si la pusiste, okay. Well, he has three, three goats in addition. He, he has it all fenced off and everything, but. Before he had more, but he got rid of them. So he doesn't have his trucks on all day. It wouldn't make sense. Once a week he turns on his trucks if, if any. Just for twenty minutes? Just to warm them up, just to have them going. If they can prove anything, he's willing to also cooperate.
Right, right, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, uh, next would be that, uh, is there, is there anyone who would like to continue the hearing?
I would like to do so on behalf of the City of Irrigan, please. Paige Sully, City Attorney, City of Irrigan. Uh, I, I did not see in your code that this hearing today would be de novo. I assumed that it would be on the record. Nonetheless, we'll, we'll roll with that, but I would like the opportunity, since additional evidence was taken from the applicant in regard to this matter, I would like to request that the record be kept open, so I can evaluate that and determine whether we, we wish to, uh, address that further. If we're not going to, I'll send, uh, something in writing indicating that we're, we're waiving, we'll waive that.
Yeah, so do you want, you want to keep the record open or continue the hearing or both?
No, I would like to do both.
Okay, okay, we can, we can do that. You can recognize that, acknowledge that.
Okay, so that's all it takes is a, it's a request.
Um, it's not, it's not automatic, because this is not the initial evidentiary hearing. But. Um, you can decide amongst.
Actually, I actually believe it's authorized by statute, that if you have an evidentiary here, it has to be. And somebody requested it be kept open.
To keep the record open is true, but continuing the hearing is obligatory only at the first evidentiary hearing. Is do, is that correct, Dan? And.
Um, it's, it's a little more complicated than that. So if this is, if this were the initial evidentiary hearing, then just a mere request would require you to at least keep the record open seven days. Um, but because it's three of you in the body, it's not just a hearings officer, you'll have to make your decision in a public hearing anyway. Uh, or at least a, a public meeting context in the future anyway. Um, since this isn't the initial evidentiary hearing, you would only, uh, keep the record open or continue if there was new evidence from the applicant, uh, that someone wanted to respond to, and that's the request is before you. Um, so you have to decide whether you want to allow, uh, kind of response to that applicant's evidence. It, it, um, you know, there, there was, I think there were some statements that Mr. Campos made that I'm, that could possibly, you know, qualify as new evidence, but, um, uh, it depends on what, what all he said at the planning commission hearing. Um, but, you know, Ms. Sully can, uh, I don't think she was at the first hearing, and so in this, to get a full response, you know, she's gonna look at that and decide whether it's, uh, new evidence that warrants a response. I don't think she's gonna waste her time um, on something it doesn't, isn't really all that substantive. But, um, the other question is, if you keep the record open for, uh, additional uh, written comment from the City of Irrigan, uh, you'll have to come back and make a decision in a future meeting. Do you want to allow public testimony at that meeting? That's kind of, uh, up to you. It's not necessary. Um, but, you know, it's something you could, I think that's part of this request. I'm not really sure.
Okay, so just, just to summarize it, to make sure we understand. You'll see, the board is going to decide whether or not the proponent introduced new evidence.
Yep.
Correct? And then just whether to keep the record open, correct?
Right.
And we'll do that, uh, after we close the public hearing.
Yes, um, and then you'll decide whether to continue the public hearing. But you'll, you really have to continue the public hearing, because you'll be deciding the matter in the future.
Close public input.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, that's, that's kind of the question. Do we end public testimony at this juncture or not?
I guess we, the first thing we decide is, are we going to close public testimony?
Until we close public testimony and allow the record to be, remain open for seven days.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I second it.
Did you close the hearing? Because the motion is made after the hearing is closed. Okay.
Uh, I think we had to decide whether or not to close the hearing. Because isn't it held open? The, the hearing stays open?
Um.
Because he said you, you would take additional testimony.
Uh, so, um, if you want to remain the, if you want the record to remain open for seven days, um, at, at the request, you can leave it open for seven days. Um, and then there can be a response, and then the applicant has the final say on the response. Um, and you will need to schedule another public hearing during which you'd make.
Another one or the same one continuation? Because his, his motion was, or we have to decide whether or not, or are we, we're closing public, uh, testimony at this particular time or for the whole hearing?
Uh, I think the question that Dan and I were talking about is, um, whether or not, if you continue the hearing or leave the rec- record open at the hearing where you make a final decision, do you want to have additional public testimony, or would that be solely on the record?
Because that still doesn't answer my question of, would he close the public testimony at this time?
Um, you can do that, sure.
I can.
Yeah, sure.
That was part of his motion. So I just want to make sure we weren't closing public testimony for good and have to schedule a whole new.
You, you should decide that now. Um, you know, maybe end today's public testimony, decide the question of keeping the record open. And then, uh, if you do keep the record open, uh, what does that open record schedule look like? And then you would be continuing the hearing to a date certain in the future where you would deliberate and decide. I, I don't really recommend additional public testimony at that continued hearing. Get it all done in today, public testimony, and then wrap it up with written material. If you're inclined to do so after today's hearing, get that record closed in time for you to digest it for a decision at a future hearing, where you, you don't allow public testimony.
His motion is correct.
I think so.
To close the public testimony and to leave the record open for written testimony for seven days.
And Smith seconded, so any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carried.
And implicit in that is the applicant gets the right of final rebuttal after the record is closed. That's how the statute words it, um, because the applicant always gets the last word, and so he has that option after the seven-day open record that you just allowed.
I think you said ten days.
Did you?
Seven, seven.
Seven days, okay.
Seven days. Yeah, and that should give you enough time to set this thing out, uh, and digest anything that comes in and deliberate and decide at the future meeting.
So then, then do we need a motion to continue since August twentieth?
Yes, time and date certain.
Okay, that's right.
At one-thirty P M.
August twentieth, wasn't it?
Yeah, Wednesday.
August twentieth at one-thirty P M. So Dan, can you just make sure that everyone here understands that the general public has seven days to present testimony? Um, so if it's seven, 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 um, the general public has seven days. Um, the applicant has additional seven days?
Yeah, I, I know, I, I think even a seven, seven would be good enough here. So first seven days, anybody, any, you know, uh, written comment based on what was heard today. Um, Ms. Sully may want to submit additional new evidence, which would maybe the applicant would want to rebut that with additional evidence. So that would be the seven, seven, seven. Uh, but we don't know what's really gonna happen. Um, so if new evidence comes in during that first seven-day period, the applicant has the opportunity to provide rebutting evidence. And then after that, uh, final rebuttal argument only. See, at some point, the revolving door is gonna have to shut, you know, and stop this revolving. So that's the object here.
Want a clarification? Mr. Carnes, am I correct in my understanding that, um, if the city should present additional, uh, material or information in this first seven days, the applicant's ability uh, to respond to that, to respond in rebuttal is necessarily limited to the material that I present in the seven days?
Yes, yes, it's wide open. Each time their door revolves, it's respond to what came in, in the previous seven-day period.
Okay, he can't present any new evidence in his final rebuttal, and he can't come back and argue something that's outside my submetal.
Um, the, the no new evidence is sort of a tricky deal, because the applicant has the burden of proof, and you may submit, say you submit like a transportation engineering report, like a really, you know, big substantive piece of new evidence, and Mr. Campos might want to respond to your engineering report. That response would necessarily entail new evidence, and that would warrant another rotation of the revolving door here. But it all depends on what comes in. You, you, you're right. It all depends on what comes in in each, uh, segment here.
And I, I agree with that, but he's not allowed to present any new evidence that is outside the scope of what has been presented by me in the first.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Just a staff note, Mr. Campos has to understand that very clearly, because uh, at this point, I think new evidence was verbal, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if he, his response, then, and he says something more, then he's not allowed to?
Not new evidence. I mean, he can just, um, interpret what, um,
Yeah.
uh, when the city will be.
I just want to make sure he understands that. Nothing, if he, when we come back.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, that he understands that. He, he's not to expand on anything more or say anything more, just.
Just respond to that.
What, what, uh.
That's right.
If for some reason, due to the language barrier, he does, uh, try to present new evidence, do we just strike it from the record, or do we not accept it at all?
I, myself, I think it's straight from the record, because how long could this go on?
I guess if, if he present, whatever is submitted in writing will route through um, our land use council, and he can decide if it's new evidence or if it's just a response to.
Yeah, I know.
Did, did he not say that he can't present new evidence?
Correct.
So, uh, I mean, no matter what he says, we'll just say that doesn't go on the record.
Yeah, that's right, but I would ask Dan to help us.
Right, 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 of course, just trying to get, so that he understands what's going on. That's all. That's what my focus was on this last comment, is to make sure he understands that. If he does, then, uh, we just do what we have to do.
Agreed. Thank you.
So again, just abundantly clear for the record, the hearing is continued August twentieth at one-thirty P M in this same room. So we won't send a public notice again.
Does that require a motion?
I made that one.
Yes.
August twentieth, you did, yeah, okay.
Did you vote on that?
Yes, I did.
No, 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 no.
Uh, would you make it again? That we're continuing this hearing until August twentieth, twenty twenty-five at one-thirty P M at this bill meeting.
Yeah, I second that.
You can second further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried. Okay, thank you all. See you back through August twentieth.
Yeah, right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.